I hereby call this meeting to order. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of the meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on September 13th to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please?
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Dr. Swissohn?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Yay, and we have perfect attendance.
Yes, we do.
Yay. Okay, can everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. I'll take a motion to approve the executive session minutes.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about the executive minutes? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Dina? Motion passes.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the regular minute, uh, regular meeting minutes, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about those? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Dina?
Uh, two abstains. Got it. Motion passes.
Okay. We had some correspondence over the course of the month. And as far as the board president's report goes, I just have one thing to say. Our football team is 3-0. And I have to say, I didn't get to the game Friday night, but Franklin Township actually has them on television. They have like a live feed, which we should talk about. And it was awesome. I mean, the game was so awesome. And, you know, they've beaten some of our neighboring towns, which is always interesting as far as the rivalry goes. But congratulations to Hillsborough Football Team. You've really started out well. And special, um, well, I shouldn't say a special, but there's this kid on the team who's a sophomore, Sean Levinitis. Oh my God. You know, there's like a pack of kids and then all of a sudden you see somebody bolt. And it was just really exciting to watch. So God bless to all of the kids on the team because everybody contributes to a victory or victories like that. But anyway, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Each month we try to do some, some activity to spotlight the wonderful things that are going on around our district. And to start off this academic school year, we're going to be sharing some of the work that we do in our extended school year program. And here tonight from the Office of Special Services is Mrs. Jo Maldune. Ms. Maldune, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium.
Good evening. Tonight I'd like to highlight the successful extended school year, our ESY program, that the Department of Special Services ran for six weeks, from July 2nd until August 10th. Having worked in this district for 11 years and as ESY coordinator for the last three, I have to say that it has been a pleasure to be a part of such a well-executed program. It is not the summer school that I remember. Students were actively engaged in meaningful instruction with the support of our dedicated staff members, all while having fun in doing so. This summer, we serviced a total of 281 students with disabilities. 221 were from the ages of five to 21, and we had the privilege of serving 60 of our youngest learners in the preschool program. Over the course of the summer, our students worked on maintaining their academic skills in reading, writing, math, and social-emotional areas. Many of our students worked with speech therapists to focus on language and communication skills. Other students worked with occupational therapists and our physical therapists to focus on their fine and gross motor development. These services were creatively provided through a variety of formats by our related service staff, either individually or in small groups. Some therapies were provided in the classroom setting and some through more natural settings, such as on the playground, throughout the school building, and even on the class trip. During the extended school year program, while every day was dedicated to providing high-quality instruction and ensuring student academic, academic engagement, there were opportunities for our students with disabilities to socialize and meet new peers from other school buildings that they would not otherwise have the opportunity to meet. Overall, it was truly a rewarding experience for our students and one they should feel proud of. Some of the highlights from the summer ESY program include weekly trips to ShopRite for our high school students who participate in our community work program. Prior to their trip, the students surveyed the ESY teachers to generate a shopping list of supplies. Under the leadership of the ESY teachers, our students went shopping for these items, paying close attention to price comparisons, and then successfully purchased the items at the register. Upon return to the ESY program, our students sorted and disseminated the items to our teachers. We are very proud of our students' accomplishments and appreciate their contribution to our ESY program as they work, they are working towards transition into adulthood. We also had the opportunity to take many of the students in the ESY program to a sensory-friendly field trip to Hillsborough Cinema to seek Transylvania Summer Vacation. During the showing of the film, the sound was lowered and the lights were dimmed, as the objective of the trip was to help desensitize our students to the movie experience and to generalize communication and social skills in the public setting. Lastly, our annual school supply drive was once again a success. The families of the students participating, excuse me, in the ESY program generously donated school supplies which were in turn donated to the Hillsborough Food Pantry. The students in Mr. Bernhardt's class, who were going into grades nine and 10, organized the drive and went to the food pantry to deliver the supplies. According to Mr. Bernhardt, quote, "We got more supplies than expected," and his class told him, quote, "It feels amazing to help other people." We'd like to thank all of the staff who worked the program, as well as the Hillsborough Township Public Schools Building and Grounds staff, Technology Department, Transportation Department, High School Administration and Custodial staff, and the 130 student volunteers who made the program a success. And we could not do this without the support of the Board of Education and District Administration. Additionally, we'd like to thank the parents for giving us the opportunity to work with your children over the summer. We truly look forward to ESY 2019. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you do and for all your staff does. Are there any questions from the board for our speaker? Okay.
I also have a few more announcements, Madam President. I'm pleased to share some wonderful news from around the district with the board and the community members in attendance tonight. Recently, the website neech.com released a few of their 19, um, a few of their 2019 rankings for K-12 schools and districts. I'm proud to say that Hillsborough Township Public School was listed in many of these rankings. In the 2019 Best Places to Teach, Hillsborough Township Public Schools ranked number one in Somerset County and number 30th in the state of New Jersey. This ranking is, is based upon an analysis of academic and teacher data from the U.S. Department of Education, along with reviews from students and parents. In the 2019 District with the Best Teachers in Somerset County, Hillsborough Township Public Schools ranked second. This ranking is based upon student and parent ratings of teachers, teacher salaries, teachers' absenteeism, teacher tenure, student-to-teacher ratio, and the Neech academic grade for the district. Hillsborough was also ranked as the best school districts for athletes in Somerset County, the 26th best in the state of New Jersey, and 171st in the country. This ranking is based upon data including student and parent review of athletics, number of state championships, student participation, and the number of sports offered in the school. Thank you to the students, teachers, parents, administrators, and coaches who work so hard every day to make Hillsborough Schools a great place to learn and work. That deserves a round of applause, don't you think? As our president said previously, congratulations to Hillsborough High School sophomore Sean Levinitis, who was named last week's Courier-News Football Player of the Week by online voters. Sean beat out six other candidates for this honor following his second fantastic game in a row for the Raiders. His Player of the Week award followed the team's victory over Bridgewater Raritan, where Sean rushed for 248 yards, four touchdowns, and also started as a free safety. Congratulations to Sean and the entire Raider football team. And as Mrs. Haas said, the varsity team is currently 3-0 after their win over Franklin on Friday and will host 100 Central this Friday at 7:00 PM at home. It's also my pleasure to announce that two Hillsborough High School students have been named semifinalists in the, in the 2019 National Merit Scholar Program. Congratulations to Hillsborough High School seniors Curtis Chen and Sumay Shaw on achieving this prestigious honor. To be named a National Merit semifinalist, students must have an outstanding academic record throughout high school, be endorsed and recommended by a high school official, submit a written essay, and earn SAT scores that confirm their earliest performance on the PSATs. About 1.6 million juniors in more than 22,000 high schools entered the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2017 PSATs. All semifinalists are eligible to receive 7,500 National Merit Scholarships worth, in total, $31 million. The nationwide pool of semifinalists represents less than 1% of all high school seniors. Congratulations to Curtis and Sumay. We are so very proud of you. And I would like to shift gears and continue our public conversation on our district's consideration of a referendum. The presentation here is entitled Investing in Our Future. And tonight we're going to talk a little bit about the Funding Formula and the state's reduction in our state aid. As you recall, our referendum is broken up into three different areas. The first are facility needs in each of our nine schools. Financial stability, especially during decreases in state aid and dealing with the 2% cap on our expenditures when costs rise above 2%. And looking at the recommendations coming out of the strategic planning work groups to include a new high school and full-day kindergarten. But tonight we're going to focus more specifically on financial stability. In order to do that, I think we need a little bit of background on what the school funding formula is, so that we can understand how state aid is calculated, for us as well as all schools in the state of New Jersey. This is based upon a law that was passed in, in 2008 called the School Funding and Reform Act, or commonly known as SFRA. I'm actually going to walk you through our state aid notice, so you can see how different parts are calculated and how much state aid we do receive, how much state aid they believe we should receive, and how that's going to move throughout, throughout the years. Basically, the state aid formula sets up what's called a adequacy budget. It calculates this adequacy budget based upon the number of students and what the students' needs are. And then that cost of the adequacy budget is shared between property taxpayers and the state aid. So it's shared between what's called the local fair share and state aid. So remember, we build a budget, the adequacy budget, and then that budget is shared between the local fair share and state aid. So this is our actual state aid notice for this fiscal year, and it begins with the enrollment calculation. And the enrollment calculation is broken into four different levels here. First, kindergarten, then elementary, which is K through 5, according to the state data. Middle school are, are counted as grades 6 through 8, and then high school 9 through 12. And based upon an enrollment projection that's calculated from the state, they give us the amount of students in each of these areas. So about 400 students in our half-day kindergarten program, about 2,800 in K through 5, a little bit more than 1,700, closer to 1,800 in middle school, 6-8, and our high school at about 2,300. And then each of those numbers of kids are given a weight. And that weight depends upon what grade level the kids are in. So for example, if you're in elementary school, your weight is 1. So for every elementary kid, our weighted enrollment is the exact same number as kids in grades K through 5. But the state recognizes that it may cost a little bit more to educate a child in middle school and even more than, and even more for kids in high school. Now, this is a number I just want you to take a look at. Right now, because we have a half-day kindergarten program, our projected weighted enrollment is half of our actual students. So instead of about 400 kids, we have about 200 kids are in the weighted enrollment. So because we have a half-day versus a full-day K, it changes the weighted enrollment, which changes the adequacy budget. Now, it's not just the number of kids in each different level, but it's what the kids' needs are. The state defines an at-risk student as a child who qualifies for free and reduced lunch. LEP students are limited English proficient students, students that, whose language at home, primary language at home is not English, and the combination of two. So kids that are not speaking English at home and also are economically disadvantaged are also given different weights. So these are our projected enrollments based upon each different level for at-risk students, LEP and LEP and low-income. And then each of those are given a weight. So for kids that qualify for free and reduced lunch, they get an additional weight of .47. For kids that are LEP only, get a weight of .5. And the projected weight is .47 plus 1.25, or a little bit more than, than each of them individually. And then when you sum up all of those different weights, you get what's called the Total Projected Weighted Enrollment, which is about 7,900 kids for us, which are weighted enrollments based upon how many kids are in different grade levels and what those needs are. Then we take those enrollments and we multiply it by a cost per pupil. The state believes that it, in order to educate a child, it costs $11,209 per kid. There's also what's called a GCA, which is a geographic cost adjustment, because in Somerset County, it's a little bit more expensive than it is in, I don't know, Sussex County, Gloucester County. So we actually get a little bit more with state aid because it costs a little bit more. adjustment for the, for where you live, and you get a particular figure. And this is a dollar figure of 87.4 million. We also do that for at-risk, as well as LEP only, and a combination of LEP and low-income, as you saw on the previous slide. Now, there's also an adjustment for children who have special needs. And in the state of New Jersey, the cost to educate a child with special needs is a little over $17,000. So the state recognizes that additional resources are needed to educate students who have special needs. This is regardless of what the need is. So a child that has autism is, is not, or a child that needs a one-to-one nurse is counted the same as a child that is, that has some reading difficulty and is classified for, for a reading disability. So it's kind of an average, is, is my point. And I also want you to look at this figure, which is very important. 14.92 is the average in the state of New Jersey of how many kids qualify for special education services. It's not our percentage, it's the percentage in the state. So if you classify more than 14.9, you don't get as much money as you technically should. And if you classify less than 14.9, you get more money than you actually should. So that's a controversial figure right there. We actually classify more than 14.9. There's also a GSA on, on some of these as well. And you get a special allotment for speech-only kids, children that have articulation issues and are just receiving speech only. And, and there's a, and there's allotment for them as well. And then when you add up all of these different calculations, you come to what's called the adequacy budget. And our adequacy budget for this year is about $104 million or so. So remember what I said before, the adequacy budget is a shared responsibility between local fair share and state aid. So how do we calculate the local fair share? The local fair share is broken into two different areas. Equalized property valuation, or how much the property is valued at in your community, which here it's about 6.4 billion. And district income. And the district income comes from income taxes for people who reside in Hillsborough Township. Now, also note that these are not, not up to date. It's a year lag for the equalized property valuation, and it's about a three-year lag for district income also. And the state puts those two together, makes ratios out of them, and it comes to a figure. And that figure is the local fair share. And what the state does is it subtracts the local fair share from the adequacy budget, and this is the state aid, called equalization aid. So this is the aid that equalizes up to the adequacy budget based upon how much the local fair share is. So there are also other aid that is not part of the formula, but is part of the allocation. And there are different categories. So one category is equalization aid that I just talked about, the $9.6 million of equalization aid. But there's also categorical aid for special education, for what's called security aid, and transportation aid as well. And all districts get, get allocations based upon the number of kids and the, and what the needs are for special education, security, and transportation aid. Now, basically what they do is then they add it all up, and it's about 19.3 million is the aid that, that the state says we're entitled to, based upon SFRA. But the aid that we received this past year was about 25 million. So what has happened over the past, I would say, six years or so, the, the state of New Jersey gave districts what's called Hold Harmless Aid, or Adjustment Aid. They made an adjustment so that no district actually walked backwards in their state aid. So the Adjustment Aid is the difference between what you received the year before versus what your state aid calculation is. And that adjustment is 5.6 million. Now, this is very important to know what the Adjustment Aid is, because the state is in a process right now of shifting Adjustment Aid from districts that receive it, and, and that Adjustment Aid will be zeroed out within six years from now. It's actually a seven-year process, but we're already into the first year. So in six years, 5.6 million dollars, if things don't change, and they always do change, sometimes for the better, sometimes for the worse, but we'll be losing about 5.6 million dollars in, in state aid. That is, that's very, very difficult. This is a, an article that was posted on August 8th. This was in the Star-Ledger. "New Jersey is Slashing State Aid Funding for 172 Districts. Can They Survive?" Question mark. 172 districts is about a third of the districts in the state of New Jersey, and they're going to be transferring Adjustment Aid over that period of time to 2/3rds of the districts. The total amount of Adjustment Aid in the state of New Jersey is about 600 million. That's $600 million that are going to be leaving some districts and going to other districts. And that puts enormous pressure on local property taxpayers, and arguably is something that, that I personally and professionally believe we need to advocate for. And that, that is something that no child should have to walk backwards as we make these type of adjustments to ensure that we have proper funding throughout the state of New Jersey. There are districts actually that are paying above their local fair share, are spending below adequacy, and are underfunded. That's not us. But there are districts like that, and those districts should be in the front of the line for state aid. Districts like Hillsborough shouldn't be in the front of the line, but no district should be walking backwards as we go through this process. And that's what I fear. This year, excuse me, this year, and there's seven years' worth of reductions, this year we lost 280,000. Next year, what's anticipated to be lost is approximately $1 million in state aid. And I just want to share with you this final statistic before I turn it over to the, to the board for, for its thoughts. According to the most recent data, and this is more recent than when I presented the budget in, in March of this past year, the most recent data indicates that the budgeted cost amount per pupil, according to the DOE's own data, is that the average in New Jersey is about $16,000 per kid. Ours is about $15,300. And to summarize, Hillsborough Township Board of Education spends $657 less per pupil than the average district in the state of New Jersey. And if you recall, I did this same analysis during the budget presentation, and it was $400 difference. So it's actually widening as time is going on. So at this point, I'd, I'd like to turn it over to our, our board president for any, any comment and any questions or thoughts from, from the board. Brett?
Are there any comments from any of the board members? Brett?
I, I kind of know the answer to this, but I just want to, that 94 million, I believe, that they say is our local fair share, how much do we actually tax of that amount? Like, I know we don't tax full 94 million in property tax. How much do we bring in from property tax versus that number?
We're getting closer to that number, but we're not getting closer because of spending on educational programs. We're getting closer to that number because the increases every year in healthcare insurance. So the increase, as you know, the waiver was almost exactly the amount of the 2% on the cap. So we're actually spending just on increases in healthcare, not healthcare alone, but just the increases from one year to the next, almost as much as 2% on the levy.
So do we know the actual number, how much we bring in from local taxing? From property tax?
Yeah, that, that'll be calculated as part, a part of the analysis that we can give to you as we collect the data. But we're getting closer.
I, I just want to point out that you make it, you make these big calculations and show that, and you say, "Well, the state says we should make 94 million locally, so they're giving us X number, you know, from the state, but we're not making 94. So we're already starting at a deficit, although they think we should be able to get it locally, and we probably could, but we're capped out. So, you know, it has to be clear that we're not making that number to start with where they think we are, and now they're backing us even further away from that."
We're getting closer to our local fair share.
I know, but we're still...
And we can present that to the, to the, to the board, how far away we are.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff, for that presentation. My question is with respect to the special education funding. Does that include extraordinary aid? Okay, so...
No, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up. Extraordinary aid is not part of our state aid allocation that we get annually. The state recognizes that some children, the, the investment that we make for some of our neediest children is, is exceptionally high. The board is actually going to be approving tuition payments for out-of-district children tonight. And some of those, some of those tuitions are very important investments for these children, very much needed and necessary, but they're, but they're very expensive. And the state recognizes that the, that the local taxpayers shouldn't bear all of that cost, should bear part of that cost. So it, it has what's called an extraordinary aid allocation, and extraordinary aid is supposed to be maybe 95%, depending upon certain things, above $40,000 that's spent approximately per student. So it doesn't pick up all of that cost. It picks up a, a large portion of that cost past $40,000. The downside is, however, that the state has been funding extraordinary aid at a fraction of what it should be. So I think we're at about 56, somewhere around there, maybe even lower at this point.
I think it's even lower.
What, do you know?
50.
It's 50%. So we're now at 50% of the extraordinary aid. And that's a significant, significant part of, part of this calculation that's not here.
And that's in addition to already the gap between the $17,000 average that they say it costs to educate a special needs child, and the $40,000 where we start picking up, 50% above that. And some of these tuitions are upwards of $100,000. And there's no cap if we send out of district on how much they can raise their tuition.
Yep.
And those costs, just so everybody understands, are going up significantly in our, at what percentage of our budget is now special needs education?
It's above 10%, sometimes between 4 and 6, I would say, all in, including transportation.
That's about an average, yeah, about an average 6, a little, little greater than 6.
And, and there's a good reason for that. There are, there's an increasing need.
Absolutely.
The growing rate of children that are diagnosed with autism is on an exponential path. I mean, it's, it's increasing at an increasing rate. So there is greater need to do that, yet the cap does not allow for, for adjustments.
And the state is not paying what they, what they have determined they should be paying?
It's actually a lower percentage each year for a long time now.
Yes. That is a fact. Every year it goes.
...in Hillsborough Township. Now, also note that these are not up to date. It's a year lag for the equalized property valuation, and it's about a three-year lag for district income also. And the state puts those two together, makes ratios out of them, and it comes to a figure. And that figure is the local fair share. And what the state does is it subtracts the local fair share from the adequacy budget, and this is the state aid, called equalization aid. So this is the aid that equalizes up to the adequacy budget based upon how much the local fair share is. So there are also other aid that is not part of the formula but is part of the allocation. And there are different categories. So one category is equalization aid that I just talked about, the $9.6 million of equalization aid. But there's also categorical aid for special education, for what's called security aid, and transportation aid as well. And all districts get allocations based upon the number of kids and what the needs are for special education, security, and transportation aid. Now, basically what they do is then they add it all up, and it's about 19.3 million is the aid that the state says we're entitled to based upon SFRA. But the aid that we received this past year was about 25 million. So what has happened over the past, I would say, six years or so? The state of New Jersey gave districts what's called Hold Harmless Aid or Adjustment Aid. They made an adjustment so that no district actually walked backwards in their state aid. So the Adjustment Aid is the difference between what you received the year before versus what your state aid calculation is. And that adjustment is 5.6 million. Now, this is very important to know what the Adjustment Aid is because the state is in a process right now of shifting Adjustment Aid from districts that receive it, and that Adjustment Aid will be zeroed out within six years from now. It's actually a seven-year process, but we're already into the first year. So in six years, 5.6 million dollars, if things don't change, and they always do change, sometimes for the better, sometimes for the worse, but we'll be losing about 5.6 million dollars in state aid. That is, that's very, very difficult. This is an article that was posted on August 8th. This was in the Star Ledger. "New Jersey is Slashing State Aid Funding for 172 Districts: Can They Survive?" 172 districts is about a third of the districts in the state of New Jersey, and they're going to be transferring Adjustment Aid over that period of time to two-thirds of the districts. The total amount of Adjustment Aid in the state of New Jersey is about 600 million. That's $600 million that are going to be leaving some districts and going to other districts. And that puts enormous pressure on local property taxpayers, and arguably is something that I personally and professionally believe we need to advocate for. And that is something that no child should have to walk backwards as we make these type of adjustments to ensure that we have proper funding throughout the state of New Jersey. There are districts, actually, that are paying above their local fair share, are spending below adequacy, and are underfunded. That's not us. But there are districts like that, and those districts should be in the front of the line for state aid. Districts like Hillsborough shouldn't be in the front of the line, but no district should be walking backwards as we go through this process. And that's what I fear. This year, excuse me, this year, and there's seven years' worth of reductions, this year we lost 280,000. Next year, what's anticipated to be lost is approximately $1 million in state aid. And I just want to share with you this final statistic before I turn it over to the board for its thoughts. According to the most recent data, and this is more recent than when I presented the budget in March of this past year, the most recent data indicates that the budgeted cost amount per pupil, according to the DOE's own data, is that the average in New Jersey is about $16,000 per kid. Hours is about $15,300. And to summarize, Hillsborough Township Board of Education spends $657 less per pupil than the average district in the state of New Jersey. And if you recall, I did this same analysis during the budget presentation, and it was $400 difference. So it's actually widening as time is going on. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to our board president for any comment and any questions or thoughts from the board. Brett?
Are there any comments from any of the board members? Brett?
I kind of know the answer to this, but I just want to, that 94 million, I believe, that they say is our local fair share, how much do we actually tax of that amount? Like, I know we don't tax full 94 million in property tax. How much do we bring in from property tax versus that number?
We're getting closer to that number, but we're not getting closer because of spending on educational programs. We're getting closer to that number because the increase is every year in healthcare insurance. So the increase, as you know, the waiver was almost exactly the amount of the 2% on the cap. So we're actually spending just on increases in healthcare, not healthcare alone, but just the increases from one year to the next, almost as much as 2% on the levy.
So do we know the actual number, how much we bring in from local taxing? From property tax?
Yeah, that'll be calculated as part of the analysis that we can give to you as we collect the data, but we're getting closer.
I just want to point out that you make these big calculations and show that, and you say, "Well, the state says we should make 94 million locally, so they're giving us X number, you know, from the state, but we're not making 94." So we're already starting at a deficit, although they think we should be able to get it locally, and we probably could, but we're capped out. So, you know, it has to be clear that we're not making that number to start with where they think we are, and now they're backing us even further away from that.
We're getting closer to our local fair share.
I know, but we're still...
And we can present that to the board, how far away we are.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff, for that presentation. My question is with respect to the special education funding. Does that include extraordinary aid?
No, I'm glad you brought that up. Extraordinary aid is not part of our state aid allocation that we get annually. The state recognizes that some children, the investment that we make for some of our neediest children is exceptionally high. The board is actually going to be approving tuition payments for out-of-district children tonight. And some of those tuitions are very important investments for these children, very much needed and necessary, but they're very expensive. And the state recognizes that the local taxpayers shouldn't bear all of that cost, should bear part of that cost. So it has what's called an extraordinary aid allocation, and extraordinary aid is supposed to be maybe 95%, depending upon certain things, above $40,000 that's spent approximately per student. So it doesn't pick up all of that cost. It picks up a large portion of that cost past $40,000. The downside is, however, that the state has been funding extraordinary aid at a fraction of what it should be. So I think we're at about 56, somewhere around there, maybe even lower at this point.
I think it's even lower.
What, do you know?
50.
It's 50%. So we're now at 50% of the extraordinary aid, and that's a significant, significant part of this calculation that's not here.
And that's in addition to already the gap between the $17,000 average that they say it costs to educate a special needs child, and the $40,000 where we start picking up, 50% above that. And some of these tuitions are upwards of $100,000. And there's no cap if we send out of district on how much they can raise their tuition.
Yep.
And those costs, just so everybody understands, are going up significantly, and what percentage of our budget is now special needs education?
It's above 10%, sometimes between 4 and 6, I would say, all in, including transportation.
About an average 6, a little greater than 6?
And there's a good reason for that. There's an increasing need.
Absolutely.
The growing rate of children that are diagnosed with autism is on an exponential path. I mean, it's increasing at an increasing rate. So there is greater need to do that, yet the cap does not allow for adjustments.
And the state is not paying what they have determined they should be paying?
It's actually a lower percentage each year for a long time now.
Yes, that is a fact. Every year it goes down.
Because last year, I thought it was about 56.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Comments? Okay, I guess we proceed.
Thank you.
Okay. I mean, I did a little rough math here, and that's $657 per pupil, less than the average that Hillsborough spends. If you multiply by the number of our students, roughly 7,400, you're going to get 4.8 million bucks. So we're losing close to $5 million of revenue for our district than average school districts, and we're producing results that are well above the average. So...
I do also want to say just one thing. When I first came on board here, Mr. Gillette shared with me that we are an underfunded district. And when I looked back at the data, he was exactly right. In the 2012-2013 school year, we were actually underfunded by $13 million. Six years later, seven years later, we are now overfunded by 5.6 million dollars. And during that same period of time, our weighted enrollment was almost identical, almost identical. So it wasn't that enrollment was changing any significant way. It's that our local fair share changed significantly over that period of time, not enrollment.
All right. Raise your hand if you understand any of this. Okay. All right. Again, if you have any questions, feel free to contact us after the meeting. Okay, we move on, I guess, to policies and regulations requiring annual review. These are a bunch of policies and regulations that require annual review by parents, students, and staff. And they include affirmative action program, acceptable use for using the computer network, management of life-threatening allergies in school, diabetes management, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, dating violence at school, substance abuse, pupil discipline slash code of conduct, assaults on district board of education members or employees. We don't like that policy. Removal of students for assaults with weapon offenses, and finally, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. So if anybody wishes to have a hard copy of one of those policies, they can either contact the Board of Education's central office or find them on our webpage where it is under the tab for Board of Education, and then go to Policies and Procedures, and then look up the policies. There is an alphabetical index as well as the numerical index. Okay? Any questions or comments on those? Okay. And we are now up to comments from the board and the public. We very much welcome public input. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak. One time is right now, that you may speak about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. And towards the end of the meeting, there is another public forum to address any topic. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. With that, public comment. Hi, Tom.
Hello. Good evening. Tom Isabella, Nine Upper Shana Court. Before I ask my two questions, I first want to say I was really happy to hear what the extended school year was all about and what you all did. I am a product of the school system, a 2012 graduate of the high school, utilized services, have cerebral palsy, and so I was very happy to hear what you all did. That's amazing, and keep it up. It's great. So, moving on to my two questions. One concerning percentage, taxes that you bring into the district, what percentage of that goes to administrative costs and administration versus what actually goes to the children? I've always been curious to know what percentage or, you know, even a rough estimate. That's question number one. Question number two is in reference to the referendum. I know that it is really early, and we're in that early stage, but I would like to get some idea, I think the residents of the town would like to have some idea, as to what kind of tax increases we might be seeing by building, possibly building a new high school, and the full-day kindergarten, and possibly the air conditioning, and all these other fun things that you all want to do. I think the taxpayers deserve to know, at least, again, we're in the early stages, but I think they deserve to know kind of where we might be. So those are my two questions, and I'd like answers to them if they can be provided this evening. Thank you.
Okay. As far as what percentage goes to administration and what goes to kids, I don't have the school report card with me. But historically, we have been one of the highest districts in terms of the percentage that goes to classroom instruction, which basically means, you know, kids, teachers, and support staff, and, you know, additional support staff such as guidance counselors, nurses, et cetera. We have always aimed our budget in that direction. In terms of administration, our numbers, I'm pretty sure, don't quote me, I could look that up and get that to you.
Understood, yep.
But they have always been among the lowest in terms of state rankings. And that is also because we have focused our energies elsewhere. And, you know, I don't have the numbers with me, but I can provide them to you.
That's okay. Yeah, I didn't, you know.
That's just from memory.
I didn't expect you would. Is it possible, I know you could give it to me personally, but is it possible that someone at the next meeting could report out publicly to the town?
Actually, it's on the website.
It's on the state report cards.
Well, it's on the state report card.
I understand, but could it be reported out at a public meeting?
Yeah, it's actually available, and it's, if you look at...
I understand that, but I'm asking, can it be reported out at a public meeting?
I got it. I got you. I thought you heard you. What I'm saying is that it is available for people that don't need to wait until the next meeting. If you look at the budget presentation from last year, there's actually a chart that shows how much we pay administrative cost per pupil versus like districts, as well as versus the state average. And you'll see in both of those situations, we have substantially less than like districts as well as the state average. But of course, we can report it out at our next meeting as well.
And then the second question about taxes and so forth?
Okay. As far as anything related to a tax increase for any referendum...
Well, specifically this referendum that we're talking about, not any, but the specific referendum that's possibly on the table.
Okay, but I think the word "possible" is the key word in your question, because right now, we're looking at a variety of proposals, and we are conscious of the estimates of tax increases, and many members on the board are uncomfortable about large tax increases, as well as members of the public. And right now, it's very much a moving target. And I think our decision in terms of what we're going to bring forward to the public will have very much, will have tax increases very much in mind. So I think by the next meeting or so, we would have a closer number. We're having committee meetings this week. And I think after, you know, the committee meetings and maybe the next board meeting, perhaps by October, we would have a number. One of the parts of the process is that our architect actually has to go and get state approvals for the various kinds of work that we have to do. And in order to, he has to do that in order for us to find out what contribution the state is going to provide towards these projects. So like our maintenance projects, if they're estimated at total ballpark number made up out of nowhere, if we're talking about 40 million bucks just to maintain our school buildings, okay? For nothing new, just to maintain and renovate our school buildings. We need to know if the state's going to provide 16% of that, 20% of that, you know, they used to provide 40. I don't think they do that anymore. But we won't know until the state approves the individual projects that we're talking about. At that point, the board could make a decision on how many of those projects we're going to do. So I don't mean to not be transparent. What I'm trying to do is not get the community unnecessarily upset about a large number that the board potentially would never recommend. So I'm trying to walk that tight...
Oh, no, I understand. It's just as long, and I'm sure that will be provided in the next couple of meetings. I didn't expect you to have, I just thought you might have an idea tonight, but if it can be provided by October, then that would be fine.
Right. But, you know, the ultimate, the official total number for whatever it is that the board recommends is going to be on something called a ballot, and every member of the public, God bless, is going to have the opportunity to weigh in on that. So just keep that in mind. Whatever, you know, whatever number we come out with, every member of the public, and I hope if people haven't learned their lesson about voting, that they will come out this year and have, take that opportunity to vote.
I know my three minutes is up, but I just wanted to follow up. Let's say, for instance, we do pass the referendum with, you know, talking about building a new high school. We know that generally speaking, you know, in our own lives, when, you know, you might add something to your home or renovate, that, you know, you see unforeseen costs and so forth. So how will we account for the possibility, let's say, you give us a number in the next few meetings about where we might be a tax increase for the average homeowner in Hillsborough, how do you account for probably, what likely will be cost overruns? How will we work that kind of thing out?
And any architect is going to provide contingency amounts within their estimates, and any board of education is going to pray that they become not necessary. So, yeah, I mean, it's not only the cost of construction. You can't just take like a square footage number and, you know, multiply it by the amount of square footage. There are soft costs in terms of the professional advice we need, and there are contingency fees, as you, you know, well, actually, you probably don't know, but, you know, in the past, we've had issues with contingency. Chris knows. Chris Pulsifer was there, yes. But, yeah, so, you know, all of that's calculated. And again, sometimes that's, you know, people are conservative, and they estimate high. And once again, it generates a number that scare the daylights out of people. But, you know, you sort of have to protect yourself. But we'll do the best we can, and, you know, we'll try to balance that.
Well, I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Hi, Amy Salinger, Hillsborough Education Association treasurer and sixth-grade math teacher at Otten Road. I was not planning on speaking tonight, but I just wanted to thank you for your presentation on the referendum. And I've spoken about this before, but since you mentioned it again tonight, I just wanted to, once again, talk about the importance of climate control in our buildings. I was so happy to come back to school this year and see so many of my colleagues with window units in their rooms for air conditioning. However, the downside of that is we're developing a little bit of a haves and a have-nots, especially in this building, and I think throughout the district. And moving forward, when we talk about every student getting the same experience in their education in Hillsborough, I think that plays a role, because a student in an un-air-conditioned classroom, even on a day like today, is not getting the same experience as a student with an air-conditioned classroom on any other day. And, you know, everybody has their own opinion on that. I thank those of you who've visited my classroom and understand what that feels like, and it just, I hope you continue to consider that, not just for this building, but for all of the buildings moving forward, when you're thinking about the entire educational experience of all the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on something that Amy just said, the first day of school, as you may be aware, we did an early dismissal because the heat index got to 105 degrees on the heat index by about 3, 4 o'clock. We were dismissing halfway through the day. That's not only uncomfortable, that's unsafe.
Yes.
So it's, it becomes more and more a necessity. And when I made that call, I contacted all of the superintendents in Somerset County to let them know, "We're doing this. Are you going to do this?" And with the exception of one district, every single district emailed me back and said, "We have air conditioning. We're going a full day on that day."
I can guess what that other district was.
Yes, and that other district, by the way, closed early as well.
Yes, they did. That's where I live.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Okay. Are there any more? Are there any more public comments? Did the HGA have a report for us?
I have.
Okay, next meeting, maybe? Okay. Any comments from the board?
I just have one.
Yes?
It's about, um, one, sorry. Sorry. It's about Wednesday being Yom Kippur. I understand that, obviously, our district is closed, but we are still running athletics after school. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's a problem.
I, I'm not cool with that.
They did that at Rosh Hashanah, too.
I mean, if our schools are closed...
Do you mean like coaches requiring practice?
Yes.
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 Let me check into that.
I actually did see something on the athletic website that indicated that, for Rosh Hashanah anyway, and I assume Yom Kippur, that anybody who can't attend a practice is fully excused, and it's not a problem.
Yeah, but...
That's not acceptable. It should, the district's closed...
If the district is closed, the district is...
They can't miss a day of practice? Come on. That's...
Let me just take a look.
I know field hockey is practicing.
I mean, that would be like having practice on the summer 25th. We don't do that.
You sure?
Actually, swim team, do they practice over Christmas?
We practice over Christmas.
There you go.
But not on Christmas.
The Y is posed. Otherwise, we might practice on Christmas.
Most of the teams practice through breaks and stuff.
Yeah, but not on the holiday.
Understood. I'm just saying, there's plenty of times when the district is closed, which we have practice.
Well, technically, if you really want to get technical, Jewish holidays start the night before and end at sundown, the day of, so technically, you should be giving off a practice on Tuesday night, not Wednesday night. But Wednesday night, you know, it's important.
Let me just share with you, this is the athletic schedule for this week coming up. You can see it says Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, and a Yom Kippur.
But coaches are holding practice.
If they are, we can, I'll speak with the athletic director, but you can see that all of the scheduled events, including practices, and you can see here, there's a practice there. Sometimes they list the practice based upon the field. I can speak with the athletic director. But there's certainly an intent not to have, not to have activities on Yom Kippur Wednesday.
Well, thanks for standing up for my folks.
I know. I was just saying to Greg, I'm not even Jewish, and I'm, you know, trying to help out.
Thank you.
Problem.
Any other comments? Questions? Okay, we can move to the actions.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, stipends for after-school language extension exploration program, the LEAP program, to accept the PLAY Unified Grant for the 2018-2019 school year, approve the overnight field trip as listed, approve policy for second reading, this is the HEP policy, also approve out-of-district placements, as I mentioned before, approve a settlement agreement for special education.
Okay. I will take a motion for items 12.1 through 12.7, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Second.
Brett, thank you. Questions or comments on the education agenda? Greg?
So for the out-of-district placements, and I'm sorry, I thought I printed it out, but I didn't, bring it with me, it's about somewhere around 3.4 million?
3.35 million.
3.35, okay, for about 50 students?
48.
48, okay. But that, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm sorry that Dr. Intuis isn't here tonight because she'd probably have this answer instantly, that doesn't include necessarily all of the services that they, that the children may receive at those schools that may be billed back to us, right? That's tuition only, and not every school, I'm sort of making a statement out of question, but just correct me if I'm wrong, not every school includes every service in that tuition? Or do we get billed for some special services?
Yeah.
Or is it included?
I'll refer to Mr. Mober.
So, Mr. Gillette, that's a good question, and the answer to that is yes, that there may be additional services that would be additionally billed to that. The contract is usually tuition-based, but it depends on the student, the IEP, and there could be things that are not stipulated in the contract that the child needs during the course of education that would be subject to additional...
So some schools might provide occupational therapy as part of their tuition price, but others, but that's not mandated? others, but that's not mandatory, they may bill occupational therapy or something else separately. So I'm going to sound like Mr. Zabelli now, so at some point, could someone, could we find out what those costs are for the year for those out-of-district students, because I'd like to see how much that adds to it, just to see. Because I don't know that the state, does the state pick up nominally 40, 95% of everything over 40,000, including that? I mean, I don't even know.
It does.
It does, okay, but that's been reduced to only 50% of what they should be providing anyway on that. So that's even more that we're not getting back? Okay.
And there is no, just to follow up, Mr. Gillette, there is no extraordinary transportation aid either. So those children that are traveling for a period of time are billed the same as a special ed child that's traveling in district.
I think also from my experience with ESC, that a lot of the private placements provide all of the service, some of them do, provide all of the services whether you need them or not, which is also another financial issue. And then, you know, in the past, when I've done the bill list, I've seen like the Morris County Joint Church providing like speech services or OT or PT services, and those are for kids who are in private placements up north.
Yeah.
Or, you know, kids who are in Middlesex County get it provided by, you know, the Middlesex Consortium or whatever. So, yeah, I think it's a really good idea to look at the entirety of those fees and, you know, make sure that whatever the state formula is, that it's based on a, you know, full and complete assessment of our costs. So thank you for that issue, Greg.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so, we're looking for a motion on education?
No, we have a motion.
We have the motion, now we need a roll call.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mr. Chio?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And we move to the HR agenda. May I have a motion and a second for the HR agenda?
Let me just read through it real quick, and then we can, we can move right there. To, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources, to approve retirements and resignations, as listed, including Sophia Fagenson, who's a transportation aide, who's retiring and has worked for us since 2013, and we thank her for her service. Also to the, send the employment contracts as listed, approve the contract changes as listed, approve transfers and changes of assignments, terminate employment contract as listed, approve leaves of absence, approve appointments of our new athletic director, Mr. Michael Davis, we're very happy to, to appoint the person who was our acting director since November, congratulations to him and his family. Also to the, affirm the appointments of teachers, long-term substitutes, registered school nurse, and coaches. Also to approve mentors as well as substitutes as listed, approve internships, revise summer work, and extra period coverage as well as six-period coverage and group changes, and approve the policy for first reading, the disclosure and review of applicant's employment history.
Okay, I will now take a motion to approve items 13.1 through 13.15. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Moving right along, roll call.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mr. Chio?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations, to accept the donation of five Chromebooks for Amsterdam Elementary School Special Education Department from Learning Alley, and to approve the policy and addendum for first reading, bus driver and bus aid responsibility with addendum.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments on the very short operations agenda? I think this is the shortest I've ever seen, two items. Okay, then we'll take a roll call.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mr. Chio?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we had an informational item on our enrollment, and we're back to comments from the board and public on any item. So, is there anybody who wishes to address the board? Yes.
Just an addendum to what was said about the football team, they've won three games, they've all been away. They only have three home games this year. I've been hearing lots of murmurs about that from parents, and I don't know what happened, and I'm sure there's a good explanation, but if anybody wants to see our boys play and our, our children cheer, they, they should try to make it to this Friday's game or the, the senior night game in late, in late October, and I think there's one more besides that that I have not committed to memory, but...
There's probably homecoming in there somewhere.
It's senior night is blue ribbon night, too, I think, right? So, red ribbon, sorry.
How come we only have free home games?
I don't know why we only have free home games, but it, it'll be amazing if they actually go into all of these other hostile territories and continue to win.
We split your conference games, and the rest is...
Well, I'm very, I'm very happy to say we now have an athletic director who can take care of all those issues. So, I hear comments, but they're not being spoken into the microphone.
There's another date of the games.
Okay.
We have someone that wants to talk.
Okay, yes. Hi, Kitty.
Hi, Kari.
Okay.
Kitty Ward, Secretary, H E A, and teacher at Sunny Mead. I was just wondering what the update, or if there is any update for the water in Sunny Mead, because we still have classrooms that cannot use their bubbler and are getting bottled water in. I didn't know if there was, I was hoping to come in to water coolers.
Mr. Mober?
Yeah, I don't think we have any update on, on the, the actual remediation to those fountains. I think there was some district decision that not all of the fountains would be remediated, depending on the work that was required. So for example, some of the work that only required like the faucets to be changed and things of that nature, I think the board was, was a no-brainer. We would replace that, and then if it was things that went beyond the piping and into the walls and things like that, that the board would, would not be able to expend, depending on the funding for that. So there really wasn't a definitive answer as to what we would and wouldn't remediate, but I think that we were very comfortable saying, the, you know, the faucets and things like that, even the plumbing underneath, but anything beyond that into the walls would not be remediated, that we would continue to do alternate source, or eventually just say to students, you know, you'd have to get water from a different supply.
I, I do remember that, and I thought, but I could be wrong, I thought we had left it that, obviously, you weren't going to remediate within the classroom, but because of the proximity to the hallway water coolers that are so far away from our youngest students, that you were going to look at alternate sources and, and try to get like, you know, a refiller or a better quality that, that, what's the word, filters the water. Did I not remember hearing about that? We were going to look for like a, a big filtered...
We, the one thing we, we did talk about was actually, we applied for grants through Sustainable New Jersey, and unfortunately, we, we didn't get...
Did you do the 10,000 or the 2,000?
We actually applied for both.
Ah, okay.
We applied, and the high school got the 2,000, we were not selected for the 10,000.
What'd they do with the 2,000?
The high school is currently, it was listed for professional development for the green, that it would be at the discretion of building principal, but it would be for professional development.
So I guess I just look at, because I, my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, I, I think though, that I know, you know, Wood Fern had different issues with water, but certainly they have a water issue, so they have water coolers, I think, with the big water bottles. And I believe H E S has a similar, I know theirs was a lead issue, and I think they also have big, you know, refillable, the big jugs, from what I understand. Oops, there's my three. And we are at Sunny Mead, you know, we're using, the, the district is providing bottled plastic bottles of water, I'm just wondering if there is, shouldn't be the same throughout the district, like, that's, that's all, that's my question.
Thank you.
Okay?
Can I just clarify real quick? The H E S has one in the cafeteria, and it has nothing to do, it was there before any kind of testing was done. I think it was just provided so kids at lunch could have water, rather than have to buy the bottles or whatever. It had nothing to do with anything else, and I, it's not an alternate source or anything like that. And I don't think it was provided by the district, it might have been provided by the school, I can't be 100% sure.
Thank you.
Hi, Bob Fenster, Hillsborough High School, Social Studies and Advisor to Model Congress, Model U N, and Mock Trial. I'm here in my capacity for the last three, and proud to say and happy to say that at our first debate meeting, Model Congress meeting, I was able to finally distribute the first-ever academic varsity letters to our, our students. It was a long time coming, and getting through that process with the board and with Ms. Binger, and then going through the, just the bureaucratic stuff to get there, it was just, it was wonderful to be able to do it, and we collectively, on behalf of H E S Debate and Mock Trial, still in the process of getting those letters, but it'll happen soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Always like those public comments of thanks, thank you, too, for everything you do. If there are no further comments? Oh, there are, and?
Um...
Microphone?
Doesn't have a little spongy... Okay, as there are a couple of comments that I'd like to make, one is that, as a former teacher of the district, I am aware and keep the board appraised of all of the heating, cooling, drinking, bathroom situations that we've had in the district, and at some point, I will be asking to be invited to schools to be able to maybe find out firsthand what's happening in each of the schools. It's been a while since I retired, so I would like to catch up. And secondly, I am, last meeting, I committed to writing thank yous for the volunteer coaches, because they do not get paid a penny, but yet they step up to help the students and to encourage their athletic skills and their abilities. So, I have written the thank yous for the board to sign this evening, and just so you know what it says, and you don't have to stop and read each one, each one says, dear, whatever the coach's name is, on behalf of the Hillsborough community, the Hillsborough Board of Education would like to thank you for volunteering to coach whatever the sport was for the 2018-19 spring semester. Your time and willingness to help students with their athletic skills truly goes beyond learning the skills and extends to the students as an example of a positive role model for everyone in the Hillsborough community, with gratitude and appreciation, and that we can sign.
That's very nice, thank you.
So I have those...
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. And I, I would like Mr. Volpe to keep me updated if there are any other volunteer coaches that come on board, so that I can address their thank yous.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris.
You're welcome.
What's that?
Can they hang out?
Yeah, could all of the board members hang out, you know, just to sign that?
Actually, we'll walk around and get all signatures before we leave tonight.
Put them on the stage.
Put them on the stage, if you'd like that.
Okay, but seriously, don't fly out the door before you sign it, as we usually do. Okay, so are there any other comments or questions before we go? Because we're going to adjourn.
I just have one thing, and I was looking at my phone to get Mr. Zabelli's question on, on the, on the cost per pupil for administrative. The state average for administrative cost per pupil is $1,688. Hillsborough Township spends $1,372 on the latest data that's available, which is the 1617 budget. You're welcome.
Thank you for that. And with no further questions, comments, or otherwise, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.